Okay, good morning, everybody. This is the time and place set for the zoning board of adjustment hearings on September 18th, 2025. And the first case of the morning is zone case 77 of 2025 for Tioga Street. Do we have the applicant for Tioga Street? Daniel, you're raising your hand.
Yeah.
I know.
Scott, continue.
Who are we expecting for Tioga Street?
We're expecting Phil Karanovich.
Philip Karanovich, okay. Philip, can you identify yourself for the record, please?
Hey, I'm Phil Karanovich, project manager, Red Swing Group, the civil engineer in the project.
Okay. And are you the only one who is presenting the application this morning?
I'm not sure if Tracy or Howard from Habitat for Humanity are going to join or not.
Tracy, Tracy Burkholder, is that who we're looking for?
Yes.
All right, we'll let Tracy in. Okay, Tracy, are you with us?
Oh, I am, Daniel, I am at Waverly Battery.
Sir.
Yeah.
It's up on my desk, but I'll pop something.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I am here.
This is Tracy.
There we go. All right, we have Tracy and we have Phil. And I'm just going to ask you at the outset, if each of you swear or affirm that the information that you'll provide to the board this morning will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. And Daniel, could you read the case in, please?
This is zone case 77 of 2025 for Tioga Street. The applications for the construction of three detached houses. They're requesting a variance from section 911.02. Single unit residential is not permitted in the UI zoning district. And a variance from section 904.07.c. A 10-foot minimum side yard setback is required and 8.8 feet is requested.
All righty then. Phil or Tracy, who's going to start for the applicant?
I'll start.
All right. We have your materials up, so you can just explain how you'd like us to move through.
Okay. Yes, Daniel mentioned, obviously, we're seeking a variance for the single family in the UI district and the reduced side yard setback from 10 to 8.8 feet. The site's located at a rough address of 7606 through 7610 Tioga Street, which you can see here. You can go to the next slide.
Okay, do you, do you have an exhibit that shows us where the boundaries of the zoning districts are?
Um, I do not, not in there.
Okay, I mean, we, we can look it up, obviously, but since one of the questions is allowing a residential in a UI district, it, it seems from your aerial view that there are residential uses in immediate proximity?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's several other instances of single families in the UI district. It goes a few blocks south, a few blocks east.
Okay. All right, well, carry on. So, and here's another question. Is the 10-foot minimum side yard setback, that's a requirement that's coming out of the UI district, not a residential setback?
Correct.
Okay, and you're getting close with the 8.8, but not quite 10.
Right, and, and just to give you an idea, the existing site here, here's the survey that's being shown. It's currently four lots, three out of the four lots are 25 feet. So there are three other, three out of those lots are essentially unbuildable with current setbacks. So we're proposing to consolidate these four lots into three lots in order to construct the three single-family homes.
I, just because they're, if they had 25-foot frontage, had these parcels been used for residential previously?
I'm not 100% sure on the answer to that. I know they've been vacant for a while.
Okay. Okay, it, it's just with a 25-foot frontage, it, it seems like a pretty typical residential lot, not one in the UI district.
Right.
So, so the idea is to combine and then re-subdivide the four parcels into three parcels and then three residential structures?
Right, yeah, you can go to the next slide, it'll show the site plan, just to give you an idea of what we're looking at here. And then if you go to the next slide, so these single-family homes will be matching the single-family homes that were built right next door. That they're in 2021, I guess the address of those is 516 through 520 North Braddock Avenue. Variances for single-family in the UI district and the side yard setback variances were granted for these lots back in 2019 or 2021, 2019. Sorry.
So, and again, I'm just trying to get a sense of the neighborhood. So you have, it looks like a, maybe an auto repair place and then some other commercial uses on Brushton, but this is sort of a tucked-in residential corner?
Right.
Okay. All right. And so I guess there aren't any specific neighbors, except for the residential, the, residential that had been built? Is there a community group that you discussed this proposed use with?
Yeah, we, we discussed this with Homewood Collaborative. I, I had provided their support letter. Not sure if it made its way to you or not, but yeah, they're, they're in support of the project and.
Okay. We'll take a look at that as well. All right, is there, is there anything else that you wanted to add, Ms. Burkholder?
No, we're just hoping to continue the work that we've done, like Phil said, around the corner on North Braddock, and to obtain the single-family residence.
All right. Ms. Burton-Paul, any questions for the applicant here?
No additional questions, Madam Chair.
All right. And I'm going to turn to our list of attendees. Is there anyone who has a question or would like to comment with respect to the application for three new single-family houses on Tioga Street? Anybody in the room? No? Anybody online? I am not seeing any hands raised. So, thank you all. I, I, it, your exhibits are helpful. Like I said, I think we'd like to understand where the zoning district line is, but we will look that up because it's a matter of public record. So we will close the hearing and the board does have 45 days from the date of the hearing to issue a decision, and we try to be more efficient than that. So, thank you all for being here this morning.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So for everybody in the room who's interested in the next case, which is zone case 130 of 2025 for West North Avenue, the time on my official clock is 9:08. So we cannot start the hearing until 9:10. So we have about 120 seconds to wait till, until we start the next hearing. But just to, as a matter of who's who, which we can get started with, do we, is the applicant here or is the applicant tending by? Mr. Hart? What happened?
Oh, good morning. This is Nathan Hart, architect.
We're, we're having technical difficulties in the room here.
Okay, no problem.
You got it? No?
You need a boot.
Yeah. We're down. Yeah. Okay, that should do it. Mr. Hart, is anybody else appearing with you this morning?
Unfortunately, my client is traveling right now, so he's not able to attend, but I will be presenting the presentation on his behalf.
Okay, and just so you're aware, there's some people in the room who are interested in commenting with respect to the application, so I would ask you to be mindful of that as well, as we wait our next 60 seconds until we officially call the hearing. I'm not counting down. Just so you know. Anyway, thank you. I don't know what I heard.
Life is always waxy because my head does its own thing.
And now it's officially 9:10. So we are going to proceed with the hearing. And Mr. Hart has indicated that he is the only person who is appearing on behalf of the applicant. Mr. Hart, do you swear or affirm that the information that you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. Daniel, could you read the case in, please?
This is zone case 130 of 2025 for West North Avenue. The application is for the new construction of eight duplexes for use as multi-unit residential. They're requesting a variance from section 914.06.a. One accessible parking space is required and zero requested. A variance from 914.10.a. Two loading spaces are required and zero, zero are provided. A variance from section 903.03.c. A 25-foot front setback is required unless is requested. And a variance from section 903.03.c. 10-foot side setback is required unless is requested.
All righty, Mr. Hart. So I understand there, there parking and loading space variances as well as front and side setback variances requested. So we have your materials up, if you could proceed with your presentation.
Okay, this is a site in the north side. It is bounded by Brighton Road, West North Avenue, Beach Avenue, and Roke Way, situated just left, or sorry, just west of Allegheny Commons Park West and just to the northeast of the Allegheny West Historic District. So, next slide. All right, just for context, this slide gives you a view of the immediate surrounding neighborhood, just, just to orient you. The bottom left corner of the slide is the park. Just to the left is a condo development immediately next door that fronts Beach Avenue. And then up the street, there are, you know, some traditional commercial buildings, which some of have, which have been converted to residential along West North Avenue. And then the railroad tracks run just along the bottom of the, the screen. This is currently configured as two lots. My client intends on consolidating it into one lot and building a 16-unit condo development. The condos, the condos would be configured as duplexes. So we're looking at eight duplexes in total in this, in this development. Next slide. All right, this is just a view from the corner of Brighton Road and West North Avenue. And, you know, looking down Brighton Road, you can see that red brick structure is the condo immediately next door. It's built to its property line and is, you know, we've, we've had discussions with both the community group and that condo for this, this development. Okay, next slide. In the other direction, this is the building that is a crest across from West North Avenue, facing the development to the north. And you can see the railroad tracks as well, and I'll, I'll bring that up here in a minute. The railroad tracks are pertinent for another point further on here. Next slide. Okay, and this is just another view of the condo immediately to the south. And next slide. Okay, so here is the development that we're proposing. As you can see, as I mentioned, there are 16 units developed as duplexes. In reviewing the development, city planning found that units one through six have a contextual front yard setback on West North Avenue, so we are not requesting a variance for that. That's already, that's already approved. Unit one has a contextual side yard setback, given the configuration of the building immediately next door. However, the zoning, the, the variances we are requesting are for units six, seven, eight, nine, and 10, as they face Brighton Road and the diagonal road. Even though the condo next door is built to the lot line, and we initially thought we would have a contextual side yard or front yard setback for those units as well, it was determined that that condominium technically faces beach because the addresses for that condominium face Beach Avenue. So we, we were not granted this, the contextual front yard setback because of that technical issue.
So, excuse me for a moment, but the development as it's proposed is a, for a single access with sort of internal drive? And are there integral parking places for each of the units?
Yes, yeah. So looking at the parking issue, the parking question, there is a private drive that serves each of the, or would be a private drive that serves each of the 16 units. Each house has either a one or a two-car garage. And, you know, the, you know, deliveries and garbage collection, we're anticipating what happened from that private drive that would be accessed off Roke Way. We've been working with a civil engineer to also assure that we have fire truck access for, for fire safety. And so the, yeah, the parking we're requesting is, is all through that, that private drive. And that's, that's consistent with what city planning has been, you know, providing guidance on as well, rather than front-facing garages here.
So again, just let me, let me be clear about this. So your request, the, the, based on the size of the development, you would be required to have six bicycle parking spaces, but it's, is it your position that you don't need to have independent outdoor bicycle parking spaces if somebody could pull their bike into their own garage or into their own unit?
Yeah, to be honest, I'm not sure whether parking even appeared because we do have the ability for any, any occupant or any, any person who lives here to pull their bike either into their garage or into their house.
Okay, and, and again, I'm, I'm just going through the variances as they're listed. There would be one accessible parking space required for a development of this size. But again, is it your position that the integral parking spaces are essentially accessible? Or you would have one unit that's more accessible than another? I mean, what, what's the?
Units five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10 all have two-car garages. And that two-car garage configuration would allow a, you know, an ADA parking space with an access aisle next to it should a individual need an accessible parking space. So there are, there are really six options here for, for an ADA, you know, parking space within this development.
Okay, and then the, the loading spaces, I think you alluded to that if the plan is to have private garbage access and presumably the, you're, you're going to have loading if you have people who might be deliver, having things delivered by any delivery service, but also moving in and moving out of the units? But that could all be accomplished within the site itself from the private drive?
Correct. The private drive would serve as, as the loading area as well. Just to emphasize as well, these are condominiums. We're intending for people to live here for many years. It's not a transient population. It's not a population that would be moving in and out, you know, on a yearly basis or a, you know, you know, every few years. We're, we're really hoping that these, the folks that buy their homes here stay for many years and are, are, you know, happy to join the neighborhood and be an asset to the community.
Well, I guess, and, and unless you assure me that nobody there is going to order from Amazon ever, I'm just, I'm concerned about that kind of parking and loading. Is there a security gate on, at the entrance? Or would deliveries, could deliveries be made on-site? I mean, in, with making use of the private drive?
Yeah, there's no security gate. This would be open to, to any driver who came in. Obviously, if it's an Amazon driver, they're, they have a, a schedule to meet, they're going to be in and out as quickly as they can. And I guess the other, the other thing I would say is, I mean, Amazon drivers tend to find the, the most convenient space possible. There is street parking along West North Avenue as well. That's not the intended place for deliveries, but should the Amazon driver decide to park their vehicle there for a minute or two, that's, that's certainly an option for them as well.
And, and I don't expect you to control Amazon delivery people, but are the fronts, the fronts of the units are on the private drive? So would there be, or are they on the exterior side?
11 through 16, the fronts are on the private drive. Units one through 10, they are facing the Brighton Road and West North. However, Amazon can deliver to, you know, back porches, to garages if they're given a, you know, a key or a, a code. So that's, that's certainly an option here, and that's a more secure place to deliver packages anyway. So, so we would. So so we would expect that to be an option for the for the homeowner.
And you said it's a condo, so there would be some form of homeowners association agreement?
Correct, and in part, in part, the private drive drives that decision because there is that shared asset. We also wanted uniformity in terms of landscaping and and, you know, just the general design. So and the local community group, Allegheny West, also supported that that is, you know, decision that, you know, this this have a condo association associated with it.
Okay, okay. Is there, are there other slides that you want? I interrupted you. I'm not apologizing for that, but are there other slides that you would like us to review?
Yeah, just just real quickly regarding the side yard setback, that's unit sixteen. Although it's in line with unit one, the building right across Rope Way does not is not immediately contingent to that or continue or adjacent to that unit or across from that unit. So it was deemed that unit sixteen would require a side yard setback variance. So moving on, I can talk a little bit about some of the unique features of the site that are leading us to request these these dimensional variances.
Sure.
So if you look at the next slide. All right, this is a slide that is provided by Michael Baker Associates. They're they're doing the engineering for the bridge over the railroad. And currently, there's a pretty significant hillside. And we're talking like ten to ten to twelve feet along the west north side of, or sorry, the Brighton roadside of the development as well as well as the, you know, the diagonal road that fronts the property. And as this bridge gets rebuilt, that hillside is going to get even higher. So with a a twenty five foot front yard setback, if we if we built these houses twenty five feet back from the road, they would really be in a in a ditch. They would be, you know, built significantly down from the from the sidewalk. And what we would like to have is visitable houses, houses that are, you know, you can walk, you know, just a few feet from the sidewalk and get into the house at an accessible level. We also want, you know, obviously, a house that's marketable. You don't want to, you know, purchase a house probably that where you have to walk down a large set of stairs to even just to get into your house.
I don't know.
This happens in Pittsburgh.
It does happen in Pittsburgh. But can you, can you tell me what front setback is being proposed? I mean, it says less requested on our agenda, so from twenty five to what?
Right, so if we go back to the, yeah, thank you. I don't know if you guys have the ability to zoom in, but I can, I've got it pulled up here as well. We're looking at a five foot front yard setback for units nine and ten.
Okay.
A one foot ten setback on units seven and eight. And on unit six, just cutting the corner there, about a six inch setback, just in that one.
So pretty close to the property lines on for those units.
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I would also like to mention that we have met with the Allegheny West Community Group multiple times, including over half a dozen meetings with their design committee. I've got some additional slides at the end that that show the product of that work and what we came up with with them as the overall design and look of the of the development.
They may be here to testify to that in person, Mr. Hart, so
Great, great.
We will, we will hear from them as well. So is there, again, I think you got through, you had the Michael Baker diagram. Are there other exhibits that you'd like us to look at?
Just at the end of the slide, there are some renderings of the of the overall development. Happy to share those as well, just to get a view of what what we're proposing here.
Okay, and there are no height variances or anything else? It's just what we we have on our agenda today?
Correct.
Okay, all right, Ms. Burton-Pohl, any questions?
No additional questions, madam chair.
Then we will hear from any, can I just, in terms of order of magnitude? Who all would like to testify in this matter?
I have some questions.
Well, you you can, but I just, like I said, I want to understand who who all wants to speak. Okay, I just want to get everybody sworn in who would like to speak. So why don't you, everybody who would like to speak in this matter, why don't you be sworn in all at the same time? And then if you have sort of cross examination questions of Mr. Hart, we'll let you go first. And then I know you have a statement on behalf of Allegheny West, so we'll let you make that. But if you're going to, if you're going to testify, and just so you know, that's the mic that the court reporter will hear, so you'll have to speak into that mic. All right, do each of you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board this morning will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you, all right. So if we're starting podium and identify yourself for the court reporter, please. Mr. Hart, we have a few questions for you, so you're going to have to take yourself off mute.
Okay, done, thank you.
My name is Barry Bier, B I E R. I'm a resident of
Not the court reporter, oddly enough, the court reporter is somewhere out there, so.
Oh, I was looking at him.
Technic, he's he's very important to this process, but he is not the court reporter.
All right, I'll look at him every once in a while, but not all the time. I'm a resident of the condos that Mr. Hart referred to along Beach. And I represent the condo association. It's the Brighton Beach Condo Association. Mr. Hart, you're aware, well, first of all, you showed us a photo of the front of the Brighton Beach Condo Association property. Do you have a photo of the rear?
I don't, no.
Okay, you're
And keep in mind, this isn't Perry Mason, I apologize, but it's just
This is my background and training, I can't do it any other way, I apologize.
You can get the information out that you want, that would be helpful.
You're you're aware that there's an easement along the back of the condo association property that runs the entire length of your proposed development?
Yes, oh, of course, yeah, we learned that very early on in the process.
Last time that you filed for variances, you became aware of the easements?
Yeah, that was well over a year ago, yeah.
Okay, have you had a survey conducted that would show you the extent of that easement, where where the boundaries are?
Yes.
And again, I apologize and I appreciate your background, but the zoning board can only review the variances that have been requested.
That was a concern I had, I understand that, yeah.
And I and I rather, I and and this is, you can present how you'd like to present, but I'm wondering if the information that you have would be better as direct testimony from you? Or does it necessarily have to come from Mr. Hart?
Give me two more minutes and I'll probably be done with this.
Carry on.
All right, Mr. Hart, specifically referring to units eleven through sixteen on your drawing?
Okay, I see them.
And those units border the rear and the easement of the Brighton Beach Condo Association, correct?
They are, we are proposing to build them, and I can give you an exact number. Twenty five feet, six inches from the edge of your condominium building.
Okay, I think you scratched before you itch, but I I just asked you if eleven through sixteen border on the condo easement property?
The rear of those units would face your, yeah, would face your condominium.
And to accommodate the twenty five foot setback, you're using fifteen feet of the easement, is that correct? That's part of this twenty five foot setback?
Yeah, because the that easement falls within my client's property, that easement is included in that setback.
Okay, I only have two minutes here, so I just ask you if those, if eleven through
I'm just trying to be efficient about how we're getting in from
So eleven through sixteen border the easement property?
Yes.
And you're using fif- the fifteen foot easement as part of the setback?
As directed by city planning, yes.
Okay, and the other ten feet would be at the rear of units eleven through sixteen?
Yes, our units eleven through sixteen would have ten feet of yard space after taking into account that that easement for the condominium.
Okay, so yes, yeah, so in that ten foot easement at the rear of eleven through sixteen, you plan on building a first story deck, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that deck would extend eight feet back from the property?
That's the current proposal, yes.
Okay, and so that deck would be within two feet of the current easement for the condo association?
Yeah, and I would like to add, we've had discussions with the condo board president as well as a couple other members. And, you know, we have discussed and agreed to a six foot privacy fence on the decks. Initially, we'd also had a ten foot deep deck. And after input from the condominium, we agreed to pull that back to eight feet.
Good, well, this is going to take a little longer.
Okay, and I'm going to, I may make it shorter because the board does not have any ability to adjudicate questions about use of easements, so
That's going to be one of our arguments is that you lack jurisdiction in that regard, and I think you agree with that.
And so we're not going to hear testimony about easements because we don't have jurisdiction.
I might as well raise it now, then, since you don't have jurisdiction over title matters. I would, I would ask the board to defer a ruling until we can decide those title matters. Well, it's on the record, so I have it on the record.
You can, you can make that request, but the board has jurisdiction over the variances that have been requested. And if there is another adjudication about use of easements, that is not before the board.
I fully agree with you.
To a decision with respect to the variances that have been requested. Which have nothing to, we don't have any variances from that setback requirement. So that's technically not even before us.
Well, that was my concern because initially, the drawings were for sixteen units back in two thousand twenty three. They were unaware or ignoring the easements, and so they actually were building on the easements. Now the drawings have the same sixteen units on a smaller pad with larger lots. So I I didn't know if they had been approved for these units yet or whether Mr. Hart is just assuming we can build sixteen units here.
Well, we're, we're, we're considering the variances that have been requested for the development as proposed. And as I understand it, the, any question about how the easement is being used would be separate and apart from the variances requested, which are related to parking and then one side yard and front yards that are not related to these.
Okay, well, there's two items he, Mr. Hart brought up, and once I get done with those, I'm done. Mr. Hart, you and I spoke back in two thousand twenty three, do you recall that?
I honestly, I don't, and I apologize for that.
I do that to people sometimes, but we did speak, I can tell you that. And you said you spoke to some members of the condo association. One of those people, it was the other day, Amy Solers, do you recall that conversation?
Yeah, I do, yep.
Okay, and so when you say you spoke to members of the condo association, Ms. Solers called you because she looked at the drawings and she saw you were constructing eight foot decks. And she called you because you and her had discussed six foot decks, is that right?
So she initially, I don't recall, I don't think she recalled that we had initially planned for a ten foot deck. And I've, when she asked about the eight foot deck and narrowing it further, I did remind her that initially, we talked about a ten foot deck and sent her some correspondence showing her that. And, you know, showing her that in good faith, we did reduce the deck already to eight feet. The other thing I do want to mention is, you know, in good faith, we also have, we initially had shown units nine and ten closer to the condominium. And we, you know, agreed to pull those, push those further away from the, from your condo development as well to give, to give that a little bit more breathing room as well. And that's, that wasn't even really required by the zoning code, but we did that as a courtesy to the the condo to, you know, try to help facilitate approval.
Okay, well, let's stay, try to stay on track here, you indicated
And again
He gets to go on forever and I get that question.
He's, he is, his testimony has been about the variances that have been requested. The decks are not part of what's before
His direct testimony was that he spoke to members of the condo association. Well, I'm just trying to get clear that that wasn't
Spoke up to them about the decks, quite frankly, I don't care. And whatever has to be resolved between the condo association and Mr. Hart's client is going to have to be
I just wanted to clear up that when he says he spoke to the condo association, this wasn't an amicable discussion. So he seemed to imply that.
I, we're not, because it doesn't really relate to the decisions that we have to make, we're going to move on from that.
Understood, well, Mr. Hart, do you have a letter of support from the Beach Condo Association?
We have a letter of support from the Allegheny West Community. We did not, we were not asked for and did not seek a letter from the condo association itself.
Okay, so whatever conversations you've had with condo members, you didn't seek or obtain a a letter of support?
Well, I would refute the assertion that my conversations with Amy were not amicable. You know, we've
And again, Mr. Hart, I'm going to cut you off too because we're way into hearsay with somebody who isn't here about an issue that's not before the board. So we're going to move on to other questions or concerns about the variances that are before the board this morning. Did you have anything else?
I'm going to move on, it's, I will just do this by testimony.
Okay, well, if you're going to testify, do it now.
Yeah, okay, well, as I said
But I would say if you could stick with the variance request, we would appreciate it.
I'll try to do that.
We're going to cut you off if you don't.
I will do that. We don't generally oppose this development. However, I I just want to say there has been no amicable discussions regarding it, and no one has sought our support. And we're the most impacted by this development, with that said. The condos, the members of the condo association from eight hundred Beach through eight fourteen Beach. And as I said, we're most impacted by this because the rear of our property borders the entire width of these lots eleven through sixteen. And originally, we were totally ignored back in two thousand twenty three with the the easements, and they were essentially building within the easements. And my concern today was, but again, this probably is not a relevant issue, that the the new drawings are the same as the old drawings, they just changed the square footage on the buildings. And somehow, they put bigger houses or units on a smaller lot because now they've given up thirty three hundred square feet of the easement. And back in two thousand twenty three, they were requesting variances to build eighteen hundred square feet houses because they couldn't fit them on here. Now they have less space and they have bigger units, I understand.
Well, I was going to say the code requirements have changed, so what they're able to do with variances or without variances have changed because the code has changed.
Okay, am I correct that it's been reduced to twenty four hundred square feet for a building lot?
I think, I think, yeah, this, this is one condo development, so just to avoid any confusion here, we're not talking about individual lots.
Okay, thank you.
With that said, of course, I I could care less about bicycle pads and so on. We were here just to raise the jurisdiction objection, and I think we have that on the record.
Okay, and we're not going to make any rulings about easements, that's not within our ability to do.
Understood, that's exactly the basis for my jurisdiction.
Thank you, all right. Are there others who would like to comment or make observations with request to the application for West North Avenue? There are other people who swore in, so come on up.
Hello.
Identify yourself for not Scott, who is not the court reporter.
Hello, thank you for your time. My name is Elizabeth Barbush, I am the president of the Allegheny West Civic Council.
Could you spell your last name for both me and the court reporter?
Yes, it's B A R B U S H.
Okay, thank you.
So as president of the Allegheny West Civic Council, the general membership voted on May thirteenth, two thousand twenty five in support of this development project, subject to certain conditions. If the board should see fit to approve, we ask that the supporting documents be attached to the zoning approval records.
And you have a letter of support that we will And you have a letter of support that, that we will make part of the record, can you just sub-
Yes, I do.
Um, quickly, uh, the nature of the conditions that are being proposed?
So the, the conditions were um, um, brought to Nathan Hart over the course, um, between 2023 and August 11th. Um, we tried to um obtain versions of the proposal to be compatible with the historic and residential character of Allegheny West, seeing as how this is the largest um development that we've had, I think, in over 50 years. Um, so it's been a, it's, uh, and we, we have um a historic district, um, and we're also a registered community organization. Um, the, we, there were, there were concerns about density and access into the buildings, just as you put, because of um, roadway is an alleyway and it's quite narrow, so um having um 16 units is, it's dense, is dense for our area. Um, we do have, we did also want to have um the homes um sold as owner-occupied residence, and we asked for no uh short-term rentals. Um, we did talk about the variances, we talked about um exterior colors and privacy screens and the access.
The zoning board doesn't necessarily have jurisdiction over, but-
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Hart, um, it, I, I'm assuming that you and your client have agreed to the conditions that um are being proposed, these are not new conditions as far as you're concerned?
These are not new conditions, yeah, they were presented to us, uh, you know, many months ago. I think there's some, still some discussion on the um possibility or the, the question of whether a homeowner who purchases here could potentially rent out um their house should they, should they move? Um, but otherwise, you know, the conditions that, um, you know, the uh, community presented, uh, my client did not have any objection to.
Okay, and we're, we're gonna accept the letter from um Allegheny West as part of our record?
Thank you.
Is there anything else you wanted to add?
No, we, we appreciated Nathan Hart's willingness to work with us over the course of many uh year, a couple of years, and um, and we appreciate your time today.
Okay, great, thank you very much. And so we, we do have a letter from the Allegheny West Civic Council, which we are going to make part of our record this morning. All right, is there anybody else who would like to speak or comment with respect to this application? I thought you had sworn in.
Hello, my name is Mary Barbush.
Might have to pull your mic down there.
Anyway, B A R B U S H, similar.
Okay.
If not exact, anyway, I just wanted to say that we do appreciate very much that the um owner, with Mr. Hart's assistance, was willing to come to us, and when we had-
Who is "us" in that?
The Allegheny West Civic Council, I was on the committee with Tom and other members in the neighborhood, trying to um find a way to have compromise, because we, we, uh, understanding that you don't necessarily um are interested in these things, but these things are about quality of life and whether or not the community feels um that it's moving in the right direction, and, and these things are, were important to us, uh, especially the thing that I hope that you'll consider in the future, I mean, the, the setbacks that are not so popular now, and parking really do matter, and one of the slides that you showed shows that people are parking on the sidewalks. So people wanna say, we don't need parking, but we do need parking for projects like this, and the setbacks do help when you have fire, having people have the ability to get in between buildings so that they can, um, you know, it, it's not right abutting next to it. The property that is on beach that the condos are in was already there, that, that it went straight to the curbs, it, it grant, was grandfathered because it was earlier than the zoning that is existing now. But one other comment, um, in clarification, it mentions that it abuts beach, it doesn't. This property is, like, the condos are on beach and this property is behind it, so it's really Rope Way, Brighton Road, and uh West North Avenue that the property is, is connected to, and I thought that that was a confusion in some of the information that was posted around where this property was when we first saw it, we were like, where on beach, where, I don't understand, because the, the property wasn't there. So anyway, um, thank you for your time, please do consider these, these issues in the future.
We, and we, and I, believe me, when I say we don't care, there, there are things that we don't have jurisdiction over, and that, it's not that we don't care, it's just that we can't make a ruling, and uh there's some things over which we don't have the authority to impose.
I understand, I understand completely, but I do understand also that you hear people coming before you, and if planning commission members ask you about things, these are important to neighborhoods, that, that we, they, we need parking, we need, we do want development, but we want them to be, you know, considerate, and this, they were trying to be considerate as also, they also have things that are important to them, so they tried to work with us. So thank you for your time.
Perfect, thank you very much for being here. Is there anybody else who would like to um comment or testify with respect to the application for West North Avenue? Seeing none, all right. Miss, uh, Mr. Hart, did you want to respond to anything? My suggestion is, the answer is no.
No, no, I think we're, we're good to go.
Good answer, you didn't have any other questions?
No additional questions, ma'am.
All right, we're gonna close the hearing, we will accept all of the exhibits, including the letter from West, Allegheny West Civic Council as part of our record, and um the board does have 45 days to issue a decision, and we will try to be more timely than that. So, thank you all for coming in, we really do appreciate seeing people in the room.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good day. All right. Mr. Gall, you're here for Dennison? Is it my understanding that the hearing is to be rescheduled? Okay, I'm gonna, excuse me for a moment, I think we have time that I can take this out of order. So the posted time for the hearing on Dennison Street is 9:30, it is past 9:30. So briefly, Zone Case 99 of 2025 is 1639 Dennison Street. It's our understanding that the hearing for that application is being rescheduled? Mr. Gall, did you wanna, was the rescheduling at your request?
No, my, I was actually on behalf of the uh, the applicant. I am here today on behalf of objectors, Deborah Barnison Lange, L A N G E, and Stephen Lange, L A N G E. We were informed of the desire to postpone, I believe, uh, yesterday afternoon. My goal in being here today is just to ensure that the rescheduling is consistent with the plan schedules.
Being a hearing, is that what you're saying, Mr. Gall?
No, we, we're pretty confident in that, we just wanted to make sure that there are some availability questions, particularly during the first part of October, and-
Do we have a, a date that has been suggested for the rescheduled hearing?
No, the applicant hasn't suggested a date yet, and I do not believe that they're on the Zoom right now, so.
Okay, so I, I would suggest that if the, before you set a date with the applicants to coordinate with Mr. Gall, would that be all right?
I can do that.
Acceptable, all right, so away you go.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
All right, uh, so, we're gonna go back in the agenda to um Zone Case 112 of 2025, the hearing scheduled for 9:20 for 210 East End Avenue. Do we have the applicant for uh the 210 East End Avenue case?
We do, Jason Roth.
Jason, all right.
You can unmute and-
Mr. Roth, are you with us?
I am here, can you hear me?
I can, is there anybody else who is um testifying with you in this matter?
No, uh, I am the architect, the owner is actually in China right now.
All right, so um, and for anybody else who's interested in this application, um, if you are participating or concerned, we will get to you after the applicant makes their presentation. So patience and listen to what the applicant has to say, and then we will turn to anybody who has questions or concerns. So, Mr. Roth, do you swear or affirm that the information that you'll provide to the board this morning will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and Daniel, could you read the case in, please?
This is Case 112 of 2025 for 210 East End Avenue. The application is for occupancy for a residential building for 10 units. Uh, they're requesting a special exception from Section 921.02.A.4 to allow the change of use from funeral home plus one dwelling unit to multi-unit residential for 10 units, and a variance from Section 914.02.A., 10 parking spaces are required and seven are proposed.
All right, Mr. Roth, um, it's my understanding that this applica, this um structure has been before us before as a change of a non-conforming use, and the board approved use for five units, and now 10 are being proposed, so-
Yes, yes.
And I, I understand that the change of a non-conforming use is different um than a straight-out variance, but I think it's important for us to understand your position as to why um 10 units is the minimum relief, particularly where you're um not meeting the parking requirements, so.
Yes, thank you.
We have, we have, sorry, we have your materials up, if you could walk us through.
Sure, uh, well, first, I, I do wanna clarify one point on the, on the uh parking. There are, the proposal for parking is seven auto spaces and three complying bicycle spaces, which is 30% of the required, uh, so um there should not be a variance required for that, and I was in communication with um city planning personnel to that effect, but I, it didn't get removed from the application, um, but-
Well, a, again, it, it, the parking goes along with the density, and um it may inform how we think about the number of units that are being proposed. And so there might be technical compliance with the parking requirement with the addition of bicycle spaces, but we still have to think about the impact of the proposed change of the non-conforming use.
Understood, okay, I appreciate that. Um, okay, so walking you through, here is a view of the house uh as it exists. You can see there's an existing driveway, there's an existing garage in the back. Uh, if we go to the next uh screen, uh, this is just locating it. Um, it's in a uh, uh, two-unit residential district. Uh, you can see in pink that is Penn Avenue, so we're a block and a half from the commercial area. Um, next uh slide. Okay, there's the site plan, um, the uh, we've got five parking spaces uh exterior, and then we have tandem parking in the garage, the garage is deep enough to hold two spaces, two cars. And then there is um, um, to address the parking now, there is um street parking on East End Avenue and Tuscarora Street, and when we had our um, uh, RCO meeting with the Point Breeze organization, there was discussion of um that there's general availability on the street, that East End Avenue's not a parked-up street.
And yet, it's not your, it's not within your control, so it's, your, your representation is that street parking is generally available, but it's not parking that you control.
Correct, correct.
Okay, carry on.
Uh, okay, next, okay, so that's, that's the site plan. Um, actually, if we could skip to um the last slide, or actually, it might be the first slide out of order. Yeah, there, yes, this map, this is a map just showing, uh, I just wanted to show, uh, even though the, the zoning is two-unit, um, all of the units shown in this map were in the blue outline towards the center. Um, everything that's highlighted is three-unit or more, in purple are seven, are units, are buildings with seven or more units in them. Directly across the street is a six-unit apartment building. Um, directly behind us is, is a four-to-six-unit, sorry, I did the uh numbers a little while ago, but I just wanted to give a sense that this is not uh an extreme outlier in the neighborhood in terms of number of units. That's real, um, as, as far as that, that this is not uh, you know, mostly a neighborhood of duplexes where we're uh trying to come in and bigfoot.
Well, again, we're, we're reviewing this as a change of a non-conforming use, so we're starting with the existing structure, which had been used as a funeral home, so our comparison is not necessarily-
Yes.
What's in the area, but it's, you had the funeral home used, and what was the impact of that, and then as compared to the 10 units that are being proposed.
Right, so, yeah, so getting into, uh, well, let's quickly go, because you were asking about the, um, well, you asked about the, I don't know if you care to see the floor plans.
Well, I'd, I'd be curious, is, again, your position is that you're proposing 10 units, and I, I, again, we, the board had considered the change of non-conforming use to allow for five units,
Right.
But this is doubling what had been proposed and approved, so-
Well, so let's, yeah, let's take a look at that, so on the um first floor of the um, so what was proposed last time was um three units, no, only two units on the first floor and three on the second floor. So what's designated as Unit 1 and Unit 4 were um not being used as units last time. And uh, Unit 4 was storage, Unit 1 was going to be an office, whether it was actually used as an office wasn't, you know, whether there would really be use for it, but the, the, the sense at the time was that um there would be strong resistance, even though we had seven spaces on site, that there'd be strong resistance to more than five units, uh, and so we were leaving uh spaces empty, uh, and then going up to the second floor. Um, the front uh two units, Units 5 and 6, um, were combined into a single one, uh, again, just in order to minimize the unit count, and the third floor um was not occupied at all.
Well, a, again, if that was being, what was being proposed, um, because it was more consistent with the neighborhood, then, again, you're doubling what had been proposed and approved, so um, I, I, I'm just challenged to understand why all these additional units are going to have less of an impact than the impact that we, or comparable impact to what we had approved previously.
Well, I mean, to be honest, part of it was uh, was the addition of the uh, the inclusion of the bicycle parking in the code that made the um seven spaces. I honestly don't recall why with seven spaces, we did not propose seven units at that time. I've, you know, I, I was involved in that, that was 10 years ago.
Well, again, we're, we're just trying to understand why 10, not 5, why not 7? I mean, what, what is it that is driving the um request for 10 units?
Well, first of all, trying to get the third floor, um, the third floor to be used. The, the third floor is a, you know, our, our full-size apartments, um, but we didn't feel that we could get them uh approved last time, we could get the units we needed, are not needed. We get the units that would be acceptable on the first two, and so that means the third floor is sitting empty. And so basically, it's just uh-
Well, couldn't, I, couldn't the third floor be incorporated into larger units? I mean, I, again-
That would require, that would actually require building new stairs um to create, you know, multi-story um, you know, loft, not loft, but you know, units used with it upstairs and it downstairs, uh, which would be um code conceivable, but becomes a much larger um investment.
Okay, I mean, I, again-
Whereas, part of the, you know, essentially, these 10 units are viable with um modest- modest code-related, building code-related improvements. And that kind of adding story to existing units, combining units, would entail much, much more intensive construction.
Okay. Again, we're, we're considering this as the change of a nonconforming use. So we are comparing the funeral home use and the impact of the funeral home use as compared to the five units that we previously approved, to the 10 units that you're now proposing. So how, how are the uses comparable, which is what we have to consider? I mean, those are the requirements for the change of a nonconforming use.
Yeah, so the, I mean, certainly relative to the funeral home, even the, even the 10 units is going to be a reduction in intensity of usage, because when a viewing is happening, you're not, you're, you're having not only more people, but people coming over hours. So you've got in and out traffic. You know, for each, each funeral involves, one would hope, a dozen or two people coming over the course of several hours, a number of vehicles parking in the back, parking on the street. And that cycle's happening, right? So relative to that, we feel that even 10 units, these are small units. For the most part, they're going to be, you know, none of them are more than one-bedroom units. So we're talking 10 to at most 20 adults living in the building at any time. For the most part, it's been single, 10 to whatever. So we feel that the intensity of use is significantly down, it's more closely conforming with the existing usage. Operationally, we're talking about having a purely residential building versus a mixed business and residential building, which was the previous nonconforming. Obviously, the building shell is unchanged, the curb cut is existing. So none of the negative impacts are getting worse. And the biggest negative impact is being ameliorated by going from from the funeral to residential. And yes, 10 units is more than five, but five is more than four. You know, we're, we're trying to use the building economically and not have empty space essentially going to waste.
Okay. Are there other exhibits that you would like to bring to our attention?
Uh, no.
Okay. And, Ms. Burton-Paul, did you have any other questions of the applicant?
No additional questions, Madam Court.
And I think we have people attending and in the room? Are you here to comment? Okay, so we have one person in the room who would like to comment with respect to the application. And because you made the effort to come downtown, you get to go first. And then we'll turn to anybody else who raises their hand on the Zoom list and we will take you all in order. So you have to come up to the, come up to the podium and we'll get you sworn in. And Mr. Roth, you might want to take notes, just in case you're, there's a need to respond to the questions that are raised. Do you swear or affirm that the information that you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And could you give your name for the court reporter, please?
Absolutely. My name is Paula Suhrbier, S U H R B, and boy, I E R. I live at 7613 Brashear Street, which, I don't know if you, Mr. Roth, can go back to the site plan.
Actually, Mr. Shepke is controlling the.
Even better, thank you. Which is the top left or that one that's not marked? That's my lot, so I'm about five or six feet away from the back corner of the lot in question. I'm also an architect. I also worked with the Cooks previously in doing some feasibility to change the use when they were thinking about that. So I'm very familiar with the lot, the neighborhood, the building. I've got quite a few things to point out, so I'll try to keep it as brief as I can. First of all, unless I'm unaware of it, I don't believe the hearing was posted. I did not see that sign posted.
You received notice of the hearing?
I did not, actually, because I'm not adjacent. My neighbor informed me about it.
But you didn't see any posting?
I did not see any posting for it.
You're here, so we're going to listen to your testimony and.
Thank you for that. Also, if, just a few things that I think are misconstrued. While the parking is available sometimes on East End in the summer, we are a block away from the Environmental Charter School, so parking is already strained in that neighborhood, especially during drop-off and pickup times. And they use their parking lot as a playground, so it is closed off. So all the parking from that school is absorbed by the neighborhood. Two, that lot and several of the single-family residences in that neighborhood, I noticed, were not colored in in the highlights on Mr. Roth's drawing, so I think that's a little deceiving as well. And I know this is zoning, so I don't want to get into a million code questions for Mr. Roth.
Don't get into.
No, I will, I will not. But I do want to point out that I think there are code issues that would impact the exterior of the building, right? Right now, there are two fire escapes, I believe, at the back, which I know will not cover 10 means of egress for those apartments. So presumably, there will be changes to the exterior with exterior covered stairs that are required. That many units would necessitate accessibility, so there would be an accessibility issue. There needs to be a ramp somewhere out there.
Have to slow down for the court reporter.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to squeeze it all into my two minutes.
You're not, you don't.
I'm not hurry.
Where, where's this two minutes coming from?
Probably because Planning Commission does have a three-minute.
We have all the time? Great.
But that, that does not mean you need to speak for hours. It's just that.
Nobody wants that.
Squeeze testimony into two minutes, so.
So with that many units, I do think that will necessitate accessibility. There's no ramp marked, there's no, as I mentioned, means of egress marked. Secondly, this plan that is presented with the parking doesn't include any setbacks, which I believe are 30 feet in the rear yard, 30 feet in the front yard, and with residential compatibility, compatibility standards, 15 on the sides. So I don't see how parking would get squeezed in there at all, once you take into account trash enclosure, landscaping requirements, screening, delivery, as we were talking about earlier. So I really don't feel that there's enough information presented in this plan with parking spaces to show what the exterior of the thing will look, the apartments will look like. I also noted in the comments from the neighborhood meeting that I also was not at, because I just found out about it, there were some comments about budget being an issue with sprinkling eight units versus 10 units. I believe the building would need to be sprinkled with that many units. So again, if it's a budget constraint, sprinkling for eight versus 10 is not really kind of negligible. Yeah, I think that is most of my comments, other than if I take my architect hat off for that part and just say that I think that the owner is trying to claim that the building was that they're unused because it is condemned. And I just feel that it is condemned based on her own actions and negligence. So I don't really feel like she should be rewarded by not having to comply with zoning because of that. I'm not confident that she would comply with any of these things, but that's just an opinion, I guess.
Okay. And again, you had just, you had looked at the site previously, so you, you said you were from.
Yeah, about, I think it was like 2007 or eight, I'd worked with the Cooks, because they were trying to possibly.
The Cooks were the.
Their previous owners.
Were those the funeral home operators?
Yes.
Okay.
And at that time, they were living there. Nancy and her mother lived on the second floor and her brother lived on the first floor. And they, they were down to minimal funeral operations by then. It really hasn't been used as a funeral home in probably about 20 years.
Okay. Thank, thank you for that neighborhood context.
You're welcome.
We have a couple of hands raised on the remote access. We have more than one hand, we have three hands raised. I'm going to take these in the order that the hands are raised on my little screen here. So Robert Edgar, could you identify yourself and be sworn in?
Yep. Can you hear me?
We can. Do you swear or affirm that the information that you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Floor is yours.
To be honest, I just want to reiterate some of the things that were just said, that there was no, there was no posting for this. I think the point that she made about, that was made about reduction in intensity of usage, the fact that it hasn't been used in a funeral home in over 20 years should certainly be taken into account. Also, the point of the fact that there are listed in here units that weren't being used and used as storage, I think anybody in the neighborhood can tell you is completely false. Number of times that the police were there, the paramedics were there. I actually got to tour the building once. I know the third floor was occupied. And I've lived across the street at 201 East End Avenue, Historic Schaebler Building, and I am also the president of the condo association. So I just wanted to point out that our objection to this variance, and just point out, I know this is not the purview of the board, but this building has not been in compliance. This landlord has not been in compliance for any of this time, for any of these units. And there is absolutely no evidence to suggest that she would be in compliance this time, if granted this.
And again, I just want to clarify, you are a resident of the condo building that's across East End Avenue?
Correct. It's a six-unit building, built by Frederick Schaebler.
Oh, that one.
So it is a Pittsburgh history and landmark. I'm also the president of the board there. And right in 1902, I'm sorry, 1908, when it was built, they did not build parking spaces, did not have that. So we are completely dependent on street parking. And so there certainly is not enough room for more cars there. But, yeah.
I just, I just wanted to clarify, and are you here on your own behalf or as the president of the condo association? Are you speaking for the condo association or for yourself?
For both.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Is there anything else that you wanted to bring to our attention?
No, really, I think the previous objections were stated, were stated quite well, so I'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you. And we have, the next person on the list is Daniella Schwartz.
Yes, can you, can you hear me?
And, and do you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And if, if you agree with the previous speakers, you can say that, or if you have something additional to add, we'll hear that too.
Sure. So I do agree with the previous speakers. I also wanted to add our insight, we are at 200 East End Avenue, so we are adjacent to the property. I think we're the, we submitted a written statement, but I just wanted to briefly summarize that there are, I'm obviously not an expert in zoning, but we've had, we've had many issues with the way the tenants have maintained the site. They've been negligent, they've been predatory. They, the way they've maintained the site has resulted in like major, major safety and privacy concerns, including police calls, threats to film our children when they were playing in our yard, which is illegal and a privacy violation. The, the density has been just really overwhelming over the last several years.
Can you, can you, can you pause for a second here?
Yes.
The, what the board is reviewing is a change of use from the funeral home use to 10 residential units. Is the building currently being used for residential use?
Oh, yes. The building, we moved to this property and purchased it in 2022, and the building was in continuous use as a multi, multi-residential property for the entire time until it was condemned, including after it was condemned, the owners telling residents they could live there. And it was very unsafe and very disruptive. And we share a large stretch, our, our house immediately abuts theirs, and so we, we basically have abutting yards. And I mean, it's been continuously in use with, with really infringements onto our property in very unsafe ways that I detailed in the statement that I provided.
Okay. And we will, we will accept your statement as part of the record as well. Is, is there anything else you wanted to add?
Just to echo the parking and to mention that in addition to the Environmental Charter School, Shady Side Academy's junior schools also across the street. So we have two schools that are using, and Shady Side does have parking, but overflow does come into the neighborhood. So it's, it's very, very high school traffic in the morning and in the afternoons.
All right. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it. And again, we will accept your written statement as part of the record as well. We have one person left with a hand raised, and it's just, Isa Vova. Could you unmute yourself?
Yes, I did.
All right, thank you. And I'm going to ask you first, if you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And if you could give your full name for the court reporter, please?
Lilia Subova.
What is the first name? I'm sorry?
L I L I A.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to clarify the situation with the parking as offered by the owner. I have, my husband, Michael Halfand, and myself provided not only testimony, but pictures of what actually exists in this property. And what exists is a backyard totally neglected, which is not marked, not designated, and claims to be five spaces. Tenants, however, in their testimonies have said that it depends on how they park. So it's whoever gets first. The garage is one car behind the other, so it's not two spaces for two different people. Currently, in, we have owned the building across from this for over 35 years. And we know the Cooks, the previous owners. And ever since this property was purchased 10 years ago, the garage has been used for probably storage, garbage, and one person even lived there at one time, but it has not been used as a garage. We have not seen a car go in or out of there. Then the other proposed five spaces in the backyard, if people park as they want, there are no five spaces. There's also where you see on the picture, the kind of so open space between the garage and, and the structure. That is a pit, an open ditch, an open hole, which fills with water, and it's filled with garbage, garbage. So if these people park somewhere, they could also drive into that ditch. It has been there for quite some time. So tenants also have to pay, as they testify, extra for parking, extra for the garage. And one tenant has testified in the previous meeting in August that they pay additional fee for parking and they can't find parking because others have parked as they want.
When, excuse me, yeah, I'm just going to wrap for a moment. When you said that there, there has not been a previous hearing before the zoning board, except.
August 13.
Was that, was that the East End? Was there a community?
Very building. I don't know what it was, but it was, at that time, this was.
Okay, this is, this is, there, there's a difference between a community group meeting and the zoning hearing. We appreciate your testimony, but this is new to us, so.
Okay, well, tenants there have been asked about the situation. And one tenant in this particular report posted on your website says that they paid the fee for parking and they couldn't find parking. So here is the situation. It costs extra to park in the backyard. Your parking is not secured, not safe. It costs extra to park in the garage, which hasn't been used for parking. Where do you think a low-income, low-budget tenant would park? All of them parked in the street in all these 10 years. They parked in the street. And we have talked to some of them, and they have mentioned all the issues that you already know from testimonies by tenants about the management of this property, or rather mismanagement of this property, or neglect of this property. So parking, as it is claimed, doesn't exist practically. Tenants park on the street, and those are, they claim. Tenants park on the street and those are, they claim 10, 10 units, oh, the max of 10 tenants and so on. And some don't, may not have cars. That's not true. Not only do they have cars, but there's also couples. And so there's more than 10 cars. Well, so let's say 20, if there are couples is the max.
And as I understand it, you've documented with pictures and written testimony that you submitted to the board. So we will, we will take note of that and we will
Thank you.
We will look at those as part of the record. Is there any, are there other issues? Like I said, we will take note of what you've submitted to the board. Is there anything new or different that you would like us to hear this morning?
I would like to represent also neighbors living on East End Avenue who were not able to attend today and who may have submitted also testimonies who are, who strongly oppose the proposed variance strongly. And I thank you that you're going to review all of these written testimonies. Thank you.
We will, yes, we will, we will carefully review all of the testimony that's been presented. I want to turn back quickly to Mr. Roth. You had presented this as a, an application for a change of a nonconforming use. So right now, what's permitted in that building is a funeral home. And is it correct that it's currently being used for residential units and for tenants?
There are some tenants in there. When I've been in there, I've never seen more than a couple of tenants in there. But I'm not
Hey, hang on. We're not going to have cross testimony. I
I'm, I'm there. I've only been there once in the past 10 years. And I saw tenants in two spaces. But I'm not representing that that means nobody was ever in any other space.
All right. Okay. Thank you. All right. Mr. Roth, is there anything that you would like to say in response to the testimony? And I would say, keep it brief if there is anything.
Yes, very briefly. I certainly appreciate Ms. Sebier's comments. And I understand that there may be building code related concerns that we have to get through. Part of the process has been, you know, as, as you know, there's no point in getting building permit approval for something that can't be approved through zoning. So our process has been to determine what ZBA is going to permit before we submit final construction drawings. And, you know, we're going to meet code. The goal of this project is to cease condemnations, to cease operation without an appropriate certificate of occupancy, to get everything up to code, to strike the parking lot, et cetera.
All right. Thank you very much for your testimony and thank you to everybody who appeared and offered testimony and exhibits. And we will examine all of the, the whole record with our third board member. And we will issue a decision within the time permitted under the code, which is 45 days. But we'll try to be faster than that. So but thank you all for being here this morning. We're going to close this hearing and move on to the last hearing of the morning. Skipping by Dennison, which we managed already. Thank you for being here this morning. We appreciate you being here. The next hearing of the morning, the last hearing of the morning is zone case 117 of 2025 for Borland Street. We have somebody from Desmond Studios. Who, who, who might that be?
Hi, my name is John Porter.
You'll have to say that again?
I said, hi, my name is John Porter. I'm with Desmond Architects.
Oh, it's John Porter. Hello, John Porter. How are you?
I'm good. How about you?
Are you the only person who is testifying in this matter this morning?
I am, yeah.
And do you swear or affirm that the information that you will provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
Thank you. Daniel, could you read the case in, please?
This is case 117 of 2025 for Borland Street. The application's for the construction of a house and they're requesting a variance from section 903 dot O three dot C. A three foot interior side setback is required and zero foot is requested.
All right. Mr. Porter, we have your exhibits. So tell us, tell us about this project.
Can you go to the next slide, please? So as Daniel mentioned, we have a three foot side yard setback that we're requesting. We are in the East Liberty neighborhood. And this is a two unit residential modern density zoning district. Can you go to the next slide, please? You can see the posted images there of the posters. Next slide, please. Just to give a little bit of context of where we're at, we're right adjacent next to East Liberty Boulevard. And we are on Borland Street, which is on the left hand side there as you come down that road. Next slide. This is just a little bit closer up image. So we are that third, or excuse me, fourth lot in off of the end of the alleyway of Borland Street there.
That's, that's a weird little bend. You have, Borland is off of, I mean, it's next to Euclid, but it's like, how many, how many parcels long? Not very many.
No, it's probably 12 or so, give or take.
Okay. Anyway, what is it that you're proposing?
You go to the next slide. I'll show you. Keep going. So just here's some images of that context of what's there currently. Next slide. So as we're proposing it, it is a, you know, a 17 foot wide lot. That's 100 feet deep and we're proposing zero foot on both sides just to fit into the context of what's currently there. We are matching the front elevation of all those homes that are currently there as long, as well as a porch as well. That lines up with the existing conditions. Next slide, please. So we haven't developed floor plans or elevations yet, but just for context, these are what it would be in relationship to the total property lines itself. Next slide. And then just the mass and elevations, just to show what it would look like.
Well, I, Mr. Porter, I think you might need to give us a little bit more than that in terms of extending to both interior sides. Would put you on the property line for both neighboring properties. Have, do, is there any information about is historically, were there other structures on that property?
Yeah, actually, I actually showed that down below in a couple of slides.
Oh, okay. I thought you were done. So
No.
Okay, carry on. All right.
I have like three more slides and I'll be done.
All right. Thank you.
So without the variance, this, the lot itself would, or the house itself, excuse me, would be 11 foot seven, which, as we know today, with, you know, wall thicknesses and stairs and so forth, that would basically make that house or that lot basically unbuildable. Next slide, please. And so in context, you know, all the homes that are in this area, we, you know, we talked about the number of parcels there. Every single lot that's on this street has a zero foot side yard setback, at least on one side, and most of them have it on, on both sides. So it's not out of the, out of the ordinary to request this, you know, side yard setback of zero feet.
Well, in the, in the the variant standards require that you request the minimum that would afford relief. And where I appreciate that you would prefer to build a wider structure. Could you meet a setback on one side and not the other? I mean, what, why is zero on both sides the minimum that would afford relief?
So even if we did request just the three feet on one and zero on the other, you'd still have a 14 foot wide house. And then by the time you take out eight inch walls, you'd end up with roughly, you know, 12 foot four inside clear dimensions, which is pretty unbuildable. Most, most typical houses that are in the city of Pittsburgh are around 20 feet by 40 feet for this type of context. So it is, it is a smaller lot in comparison to most neighborhoods in Pittsburgh.
Well, how does it, it mean, all right. Again, I'm curious about the historical context about those setbacks that you're proposing.
Yeah. Daniel, can you go to the next slide, please? So historically, there was another houses on this property. And you can see here it did have zero foot side yard setbacks on both sides. And there is images, obviously, from newer maps that are on the historical website. But it's just really blurry because there are images of, you know, that were just grainy. They weren't actually defined like the, the map is here. So
Is there any evidence or information as to how long this parcel has been vacant?
I look back on, on Google Images to see and as far back as I can see from the, the images, I couldn't see a home that was currently there. So I'm guessing prior to Google driving around, so prior to 2000, if I had a guess.
Okay. Has there been any effort to discuss what's being proposed with the immediate neighbors?
I personally have not spoken to them. I'm not sure if the owner has spoken to them or not.
That, you, you would think that would be important for us to understand if it's a zero foot setback that's being requested. I, I mean, I, I would like to have some under, I would like to know that the owners of those parcels at least are aware of what's being proposed. And I understand that you posted the site, but it's like the squishing a house in the middle of two houses where they're, it, it's a narrow lot and people get used to having that vacant lot between them. They might want to know that a house is being proposed.
I understand.
All right. If you, if you could follow up and give us a little additional information as to whether the owner has reached out to the, the owners of those properties. I'm not saying tho, those owners don't get to decide for us. But again, I think that would be helpful information for the board. All right. It says that you're on page 12 of 14. Were there two other exhibits that you wanted to propose?
Oh, no, this is just your
Okay.
That's it.
All right. I don't have any other questions, Ms. Burton Falk?
No, I'm good, Madam Chair.
All right. And it looks like the only well, is there anybody attending who would like to comment with respect to the application for Borland Street? I am not seeing any hands raised, including the other participant from Desmond Studios. So
That's me. It's just on my computer versus my phone. Sorry. I know, I know you can't hear me from my computer, so I always try to connect to my phone.
I, I, I'm kidding, Mr. Porter. All right. Thank you for your presentation. We will accept the exhibits as part of the record, but we are going to close the hearing. And thank you to Jeannie, our court reporter for the day, and we are going to sign out.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.